The March 7th Des Moines City Council Study Session is now called to order. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, you have the pledge.
I put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all council members are present. And do we have any correspondence?
No mayor.
It is now time for comments from the public. I'm going to just repeat the spiel here for the sake of those who didn't know about the sign up sheet. So because this is a study session, we're only going to be hearing public comment tonight that addresses any items on the, already on the agenda. So their, other subjects can be heard at our next regular business meeting. In addition, though, we will have another segment of the meeting tonight dedicated specifically to public comment with regard to our consort communications draft report. So if you would like to comment in this regard, we recommend that you hold your comment until then. So is there anybody in the room who came intending to make comment with regard to anything on the agenda but didn't realize you needed to sign up? All right. So we'll go, and I think that we, we're not going to get that.
Yeah, you could ask if you want to comment now or after that.
Okay. So just in case, so everybody who signed up has said that they want to comment on the communications plan. But if you didn't realize you were going to have to wait until a little bit to be able to do that, I will offer you the option of doing that right now. If you signed up to comment and you know that you don't, you want to be here, then you can do it then.
Can we do both?
If it's the same comment, no.
No, but I mean, if you have a question after the presentation?
The public will not be offered the option of questions about the presentation. The public will be offered the option of making public comment after the presentation, but before the council has discussion. That's how it will work. You'll hear, the public will be offered the option of, well, hear the presentation, then comment, and then, and you'll also hear council questions and answers. And then the council will have discussion after that. Okay, is that clear? Good. Pardon?
So we can't pass, we can't do both?
You will not, this is not a Q and A for the public tonight. This is not a public forum. It is a study session for the council, but you will be offered the opportunity to offer public comment after hearing the presentation and after hearing the council questions and answers. Okay? So I'll repeat all this again when we get to that part two, if you want to hear. I'm just going to move on, Victoria. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the first item, so this moves us to the discussion portion of the meeting. The first item of discussion is with regard to Officer Stephen J. Underwood. The purpose of this item is to proclaim March 7th, 2024 as a day to remember Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood, a dedicated public servant, devoted son, loving husband and father. The approval of this proclamation and suggested motions would also memorialize an annual contribution by the city council to support the Stephen J. Underwood Memorial Scholarship, which is awarded by the Des Moines Dollar for Scholars. We have some recommended motions. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Sorry, I need to pull it up here.
Okay, no worries.
Yes. In coordination with the annual proclamation of March 7th as a day to remember Stephen J. Underwood, I move that the council establish a voluntary annual donation to the Stephen J. Underwood Scholarship through the, through Dollars for Scholars to be funded with a minimum of $25 per council member per month automatically donated from their stipend.
Do I have a second?
Sum of.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Nutting.
While I'm very disappointed that we had to disband the Hearts and Minds Fund, I will be voting in favor of this, and I second this because Stephen J. Underwood gave his all, and I do believe the Scholars, Dollars for Scholars is a very good fund, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney?
So I have a, I just have a question. So I've, for the past six and some years, I donate an additional $100 every month. Am I recused from this because I'm already doing something along those lines?
No, you're, this is establishing, well, this is my opinion, this is establishing something goes on as a sustainable action that all councils beyond your existence seat here. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
And I'd also point out, this is voluntary.
Yes, it is.
It is not incumbent upon any particular council member to donate or to not donate. And I would hope that whether they're donating or not would never become a big public issue for anybody, so let me just kind of address that right up front. This should not be that. But this does create a vehicle through which we can make some donations to what is a very worthy cause. And the scholarship fund and Dollars for Scholars is a good vehicle to do that with. And so if you feel that's the right thing to do, then that can be set up through the city, and that's the intent of the motion.
Yes. Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Harris.
I will be voting no on this for the same reason that I've been troubled over the last several years of the Hearts and Minds Fund. It establishes a preferential charity, and since it's voluntary, then it should be within each council member's conscience to make donations to whatever they choose. I do not think it should be the council's policy to have any particular charity, and that's it.
Thank you. If there are no more questions or comments, I'll take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Grace Motsui, and Councilmember Oxger and myself in favor and all opposed. Councilmember Harris opposed, 6-1. Thank you.
And.
And then, yes, thank you for moving forward. I'm finding it here.
And then I move to approve the proclamation recognizing March 7th, 2024 as a day to remember Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0 unanimous. Thank you. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas while patrolling the city in the early hours of March 7, 2001, Des Moines Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood stopped to question four juvenile suspects on Pacific Highway South. And whereas Master Police Officer Underwood recognized one person as wanted it, wanted for an outstanding felony warrant. And whereas upon initial contact, Master Police Officer Underwood was senselessly attacked and struck by gunfire, causing his tragic death. And whereas Master Patrol Officer Underwood was taken instantly from his family and community. And whereas he was a dedicated public servant, devoted son, loving husband and father. And whereas the city of Des Moines continues to remember the life and the loss of Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood after 23 years. You are not forgotten. Now therefore, the Des Moines City Council wishes to recognize March 7th, 2024 as a day to remember Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood, and hereby has established an annual donation to the Stephen J. Underwood Memorial Scholarship Fund through Dollars for Scholars. His service to our community and department will never be forgotten. Signed the 7th day of March, 2024, Tracy Buxton, Mayor. Before moving on to the next item on the agenda, I do want to say, I, this is very sweet to memorialize this officer, but all of our officers put their lives on the line and the security of their families, in a sense, on the line to protect us every day 24/7, when we're sleeping, they're out there. And so for all of them that are here and all of their comrades, I would like to thank all of them for what they do for us. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our draft communications assessment from Consort they'll be presenting tonight. So the purpose of this item is for Consort to present their draft communications assessment of the city and to receive public comment and council input prior to finalizing the report. No formal action needs to be taken by the city council at this time. So as I said earlier, we're going to, we are going to receive the presentation before offering public comment. So I'm going to pass the baton over to City Manager.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So as a city, as a city council, and our city employees, we're always interested in methods that we can improve communication with the public. We do have a good story to tell, and we'd like to get it out there, and sometimes it can be very difficult. So to that effect, the city council authorized a request for proposals, and Consort was selected. They've done a, an assessment, a comprehensive assessment of the city's communication, and also interviewed a number of interested parties. And so tonight, I am pleased to introduce Chris Hoffman and Nancy Tai to present their initial findings.
All right, thank you, Tim, and thank you, City Council, for inviting us here tonight to share and discuss the results of our draft communications assessment that we have performed over the last 10 months or so on behalf of the city. My name is Chris Hoffman, and with me here tonight is Nancy Tai. We are both with Consort Strategic Planning and Communications Group, and will be co-presenting this evening. As, as you know, we're presenting our draft assessment, which includes recommendations for the city to consider, and this presentation is really intended to be a summary of what is included in the report that you received in your packet. Go to the next slide. Just wanted to give a brief overview of what we. Thank you. Brief overview of what we intend to cover this evening, which is a number of topics. First, we'll provide a little bit of context in the form of an introduction and overview of the work that we performed. Then we'll talk about the different methods that we use to engage both internally within the city and then externally with the community, and what we heard as a result of that engagement. After that, we'll take a brief pause just to see if you have any questions about the results of the engagements. Then we'll move on and talk about our draft recommendations, which we've divided currently into short, mid, and long-term timeframes. And then, as you noted, we'll take public comment and then follow with a discussion with the council on the presentation, and then wrap up with next steps. So first off, again, you can go to the next slide. In terms of our kind of overview and purpose, as Tim mentioned, our work stemmed from an RFP that was released by the city in late 2022. And then we spent a good chunk of early 2023 working with city staff to develop a scope of work that will enable us, enable us to hear from city council, staff, and the community to develop understanding of current communication engagement methods, gather insights on the way that the city can improve upon current practices, and then ultimately develop recommendations that were based on the feedback that we heard. And at this point, I just wanted to note that these recommendations are forward-looking. We recognize that this is, this is an important and difficult task to undertake by city, to shine the spotlight on yourselves. And it can and does open you up to lots of different points of view on how things are currently being done. And that is, that is a difficult but important part of growth within the city and how to manage change, improve upon your practices. And so we just wanted to highlight that fact and applaud the city for taking this first step, but we think there are additional, this is the beginning, I think, but it is, it's a good step for, towards making progress. Moving on to the next slide, building on that, our, our goals for the assessment were really to identify ways to improve the reach and impact of city communications and its relationships within the community, identify current strengths, and then opportunities to improve upon communications, communication practices, identify specific ways to both enhance internal and external communications, enhance the overall brand of the city, brand and reputation of the city, and to make our recommendations based on our, our current understanding of resources within the city and how they might be allocated. So moving on to the engagement that we did and what we heard, go on to the next slide. We, we broke up kind of our scope of work into a variety of tasks and to kind of engage, listen, and learn. We started in spring and summer of 2023 and conducted a series of interviews with all city council members and a number of city staff. We also conducted a survey in a kind of late summer, early fall, and did a number of outreach methods to inform the community about that survey. We conducted two focus group sessions in October, one focused on business interests, one on residential. And then lastly, in December, we conducted a peer city interview with the city of Edmonds. And here we are tonight with you, and our, our ultimate goal here is to kind of take these draft recommendations after tonight and finalize them for your, for your consideration. We are going to now dive into each of the different methods that we use to collect information. And again, these are kind of intended to provide a high-level summary of, of what we heard, and with that, I'll turn it over to Nancy to talk about our stakeholder interviews.
Perfect. My turn. So let's start off with our stakeholder interviews, like Chris said, and these happened between May and August of last year of 2023. So we understand that we have a new council member, so really excited for Councilmember Grace Motsui to be with us and be able to provide her comments and input as well. So we interviewed the seven council members that were on the council last year and then six of the city staff members. Should we go to the next one? Perfect. I just wanted to really start off with that it was just so, so clear that the council members' pride and commitment to serve the community really did shine through the interviews. It's not an easy job, we understand that, and first and foremost, we just felt that pride and commitment to the community in our interviews. Knowing that, it's not an easy role. The council members were keen to acknowledge areas for growth and opportunities to keep improving the city's communication and engagement within departments, colleagues, and also with community members. We heard that people would like to see a dedicated communications position, understanding that a lot of city staff members, Bonnie being one of them as well, have carried this work on top of their multiple hats and other duties and responsibilities and day-to-day activities. Something else that we heard from council members was a recommendation to learn from other peer cities and agencies as well. Also heard that providing consistent, comprehensive onboarding, orientation, and training would be really helpful, so everyone has that same baseline and training, starting off on the same page. And finally, just more inclusive and accessible communications and engagement with community members, with one another, that teamwork, that collaboration, and it really showed us the spirit of continually growing and evolving. So from staff members, again, very clear that staff had a lot of pride in the meaningful work that they do serving community members, and also had a strong desire to continue to improve the ways that the community, that the city communicates and engages with community members. We also heard very similar themes of learning from peers, other agencies of their cities as well, and from community feedback when the city gets it, and improving interdepartmental and council teamwork and collaboration. Go to the next slide? Perfect. So altogether, from the different stakeholder interviews, the collective emerging themes that we were hearing is a clear need, desire for a dedicated communications position to develop and implement a unified, comprehensive communications roadmap to report objective city news and events, both to internal and external audiences. We heard that there are opportunities for communication and collaboration improvements between city staff members, council members, amongst city council members themselves, interdepartmentally, and to increase transparency and accountability. Was heard that there's a need for more robust onboarding, orientation, training, employee engagement tools, and clear communication protocols for all staff and city council commun, city council, city council members, tongue-tied a little bit tonight, so that everyone is working with the same guidelines and expectations for community members in terms of their communications expectations. Also, just this desire for more proactive, accountable, inclusive, and diverse tools and methods of communicating and engaging with the public. Des Moines is a rich community, and so continuing to evolve and grow and continuing to review the tools and methods that you are using is just a continual process. There's no one finish line, check the box, we made it, we don't ever have to grow again, but we're seeing these opportunities and seeing a desire from council members and staff to stay on top of things. And then from both groups, did hear this recommendation to learn from peer agencies, if possible, one with also a city manager form of government. This is to gain insights, share ideas on how the city can improve their own communications internally and externally, and build a relationship to be able to share the strengths that the city already has with other agencies and cities as well. So two-way street. All right, so the next, oh, sorry. The next method of engagement that we had were to host two focus groups. We held both of them on Friday the 13th in October of last year at the library, so good vibes all around. But in all seriousness, they were really wonderful focus groups. For the business group, we had 15 participants, 12 of whom came from Labor's Local 242, so really grateful that they took the time to come out together as a team to be able to share their voice and feedback and thoughts. In the group of residents, we had seven participants who were able to come. And before we kind of jump into what we heard from individuals from these focus groups, I wanted to keep in mind that these were folks who were able to attend this specific focus group, so this particular day, this particular time, they were kind of being self-selected to be able to come and share their insights and valuable feedback, and then sometimes maybe had specific opinions and thoughts that they wanted. And then sometimes maybe had specific opinions and thoughts that they wanted to make sure that they were able to share. I just want to be clear that these insights, they were helpful, they were insightful, they were honest. These thoughts, these experiences, these lived experiences, and they really pointed to this opportunity for the city to continue that growth, the improvement, and just doing better, evolving, just like any other city and agency would do. So as we move into our first focus group with the business stakeholders, we asked them about their current communication experiences. So for the folks who were able to come and share their time with us, they currently felt like there was a lack of transparency and consistency in the city's communications. Some of the folks had difficulty navigating the website and being able to get to the information that they needed to get. And they also had communication challenges with specific departments. And so that's some of the things that we heard about the current communications such environment right now. After we asked about current experiences, we asked folks in the focus group, and if you can go to the next slide. Thank you. What were their ideas and feedback on the needs, their gaps that they're seeing? Participants showed that they would like clearer processes on how to do business with and within the city. They would like regular city reports, something like a state of the city report, and engagement with the city manager, and more opportunities with the citizen advisory committee. So maybe being able to meet more frequently or have more of a significant impact through that committee. Building off of that, we talked about the opportunities to address some of these needs and these gaps. And focus group participants suggested including clearer processes for how to conduct business in the city and more staff support. So someone from city staff who can walk alongside them, maybe it's a smaller business, newer business, just a business owner who would like more support going through the processes and procedures to be able to do work here. Another thing that we heard was an opportunity to update the city logo and branding for that greater consistency, cohesiveness, that storytelling, showing who the city is and what they're reflecting. Part of that is through this messaging and, and even logos as well to tell that story. And then, of course, all of that ties into having this comprehensive communications plan for the city. So for city members themselves and staff, and also external audiences. All right. Our next group were our residents. So again, we asked similar questions, the same questions for both of the groups. What were their current communications experiences? And we did hear that there was appreciation for the city's current communications tool. We know that there is social media, there's a Facebook group, and there's a city currents magazine that people appreciated and liked, and then the website, of course. And this group also felt like there was a lack, more of an overall encompassing communications plan. And again, folks did have some difficulty accessing some of the information that they were looking for or even knowing who to, to connect with for a particular issue. There were participants who also expressed trust issues and a negative perception of the city's attitude towards hearing that community feedback. So that's what they were feeling currently. We also asked this group if they could share what they felt were the, one more slide, perfect, needs and gaps that they were seeing as well. And residents felt or shared that there was a need for more tailored communications to meet the needs of a diverse community. There was opportunity to improve, maybe expand the city currents magazine. People wanted more of that, more opportunities to hear from the mayor, more accessible community engagement events. So that could mean hosting them on different days, different times of days, in locations that people could get to. And improving follow-through and customer service with community members was something that we heard strongly. So related to these needs and opportunity, looking at opportunities and forward-thinking to address some of those, residents saw opportunities to increase the city engagement with the community. So we thought that was a good sign that community members wanted more of the city and state, city staff. To improve internal city communications, again, employing different, multiple diverse communications tools and methods. So in, in print, digitally, using social media, just old-fashioned in-person. And method, so different ways to just reach diverse audiences and meet community members where they are and to meet the needs that they shared and to better serve the people who call Des Moines home. Collectively, from the focus groups, we heard a couple of emerging themes. So again, this desire for a dedicated, full-time professional communications person could be responsible and accountable for developing and implementing a comprehensive communications plan. We understand that this is a full-time role and that the city staff members have been doing their best on top of their daily duties to be able to try their best to communicate. But this position could help have that cohesive plan and be able to implement it. The need for clear, transparent, accountable communications, which includes clear processes and procedures. Some examples that we heard were standard permitting process with timeline expectation so that people knew the timelines that that different pieces of the process would take, which staff or department to connect with for public safety concerns, and overall to have more of an emphasis on customer service when engaging with community members. And finally, we heard a desire to improve and expand the city's current communications tools and engagement efforts. So again, acknowledging that the city is doing their best with communications and has engagement opportunities, but wanting more of those and to have them more tailored to the current needs of the community members. And two things that we heard particularly about were the city's website, a little easier navigation to be able to find the information people are looking for, and even more of a social media presence to reach members, all members of the community that also use social media. And we will move on to community survey.
Yeah. So I will talk a little bit more about the community survey. Again, we, the focus groups were used to get very in-depth, have in-depth conversations with a small number of people. And the community survey was intended to kind of broaden that reach and engage with more members of the community. So over about a 30-day, 38-day period between late August and early October, we had the survey open and received a total of 309 surveys. Most of those were online, 284 of them, and 25 were printed copies. We did a lot of extensive outreach to inform the community about the survey and how to take it. These included social media, email blasts to several organizations within the community, canvassing, uh, display signage throughout the community, and then attending a farmer's market event. And again, want to note that the, the respondents self-selected to take, to take the survey. It was not a random sample survey. So some of our, our findings, I think you will start, start to hear some familiar themes that's similar to what we heard during the focus groups. I think overall, desire for clear, more accessible, diverse, and timely communication. There weren't any, you know, I would say, real surprises within the survey or extreme responses. For example, over half of the city, or half of the respondents believed that the city's efforts were above satisfactory and that the communications are helpful and understanding. On the flip side, just less than half felt, felt the opposite way. So you start to see a little bit of, you know, a split, mixed reactions between people who took the survey. Some of the key findings and takeaways, the importance of diverse communication channels. There's no one, one method that works for everyone. So people are very interested, respondents were interested in getting information through a variety of communication channels, whether it's emails, interact, personal interactions with city officials, attending public meetings, the city's website, increasing social media presence. There were also mixed experiences that people had with city meetings and events. Again, people desire more accessible, transparent, and well-timed meetings, emphasizing the needs for public engagement and respectful communication on an ongoing basis. There were also some mixed interact, some mixed feelings about interactions with city staff. Again, a lot of respondents had positive interactions and, and quick responses, while others expressed some frustration with response times with their inquiries. While more than half of the respondents found that the city's outreach materials were helpful and easy under, and easy to understand, there were also concerns about timeliness, transparency, and user-friendliness. So this indicates that folks are interested in seeking, seeing clearer and more immediate communication. Again, the topic of the website came up in the survey. Some found it challenging to navigate and suggested ideas for improvement, usability, visual appeal, and having a one-stop kind of shopping experience for all of community events on a very easy-to-access community calendar. When asked to identify priorities for improvement, survey participants prioritized expanding public comment opportunities, improving website navigation, increasing digital communication usage. About 60% of respondents indicated that was, those were top priorities. And then 41% said holding more communities or town hall event, community meetings or town hall events.
All right.
Back to Nancy.
Back to me. Thanks. So we had an opportunity to interview a peer city, and this was really wonderful. This was part of our plan, and we heard from, feedback from city council member, interviews, and staff members that this was a good idea to, let's talk to a peer city as well. So we presented two options to city staff for the peer city interview, and that was based on similarity in population size to, or similarities to Des Moines in general. And city staff members selected City of Edmonds, and that was due to their similar population size, having a waterfront being situated next to I-5, and them having a dedicated communications staff person. I do want to mention that Edmonds does differ in their government. They have a strong mayor government in comparison to Des Moines. So I had a one-hour interview conversation with City of Edmonds Communications Strategist slash Public Information Officer, PIO, Kelsey, to learn about the city's communications and engagement practices and strategies. It was a really helpful conversation to have. And so I put a couple of the key takeaways and advice that I heard from Kelsey. So City of Edmonds, this position, Kelsey's position was created in 2019. So they haven't had this position for very long, and it was created right before the pandemic. So Kelsey had a couple of different other challenges to navigate as well. The city is still developing their communications and engagement strategies and practice. So like I mentioned earlier, there's never this, like, we made it to the finish line. We can put, plan out, and it's perfect for, we don't need to touch it. So this really reinforces that it's a continual opportunity to keep growing, to keep refining, to keep evolving as your community's demographics and needs changes and your staff needs changes. And something that Kelsey mentioned too, that I also heard reflected in one of the stakeholder interviews, is wanting to incorporate more of these human stories. And I thought that was interesting. I think it was Tim at the beginning, you talked about the city's stories. And it's important to get the factual information, communications, you know, events that are going on, surveys, meetings, planning. That's really important. And what's part of communications is that human element, celebrating the people, the individuals who live here. And so when we talk about communications, we mean all of that, having a strategy to just get your data and facts, and then also having that human element. Like Des Moines, City of Edmonds employs a variety of methods to reach their intended audiences. So they also use social media, they use hyper-local meet, social media, hyper-local media to advertise events, meetings, and surveys. And what I thought was really neat too, so they, City of Edmonds, Kelsey also has a smaller budget with their city for communication. So they get really creative. And one tactic they used was to put out yard signs to get the word out for people who are walking in the neighborhoods and just being out and about to have that physical, in-person touch point about, I think it was one of the projects that I can't remember off the top of my head which project, but using yard signs. So just being creative, knowing what your audience wants and needs. And the key advice that Kelsey gave was really on relationship building. So this relationship building is within the city, so between your staff members, with your council members, working together to leverage, you know, the knowledge that you have and the expertise that you have to help support and bolster one another. It's a relationship building with your community members as well. So having kind of community champions, liaisons, folks that you can share information with so they can get it out to their network. But also importantly, you have that relation, genuine relationship to be able to get the pulse and to hear from community members too on their needs. And it doesn't have to be in a super formal way. Another relationship that Kelsey works to foster is with neighboring cities and jurisdictions. And this is to have a support network of other communications professionals, people in other cities and jurisdictions, to be able to share ideas and their best practices and help one another out. Again, we know this is not always an easy job. So having that support network and having those relationships, humanizing everyone, has been really important to them.
Yeah. So at this point, you've heard us talk for quite a bit, and we wanted to pause and see if you had any specific questions about the engagement methods that we used. And then we'll, we'll dive into our recommendations.
Does council have any questions that they'd like to address to the team? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much. Two things. Can you talk a bit more about why Edmonds felt the need to hire a communications person in, specifically in that moment, 2019? And then, do you know their budget?
I can probably, I'll address the first one. I can probably follow up with Kelsey. She actually offered to continue a dialogue with City of Des Moines if you're interested to build that relationship. So I don't have that number. Okay, let me, I can note that and I can ask. And then for the first question, I believe from our conversation, Kelsey was saying that the city just felt a need at that time. They didn't have one dedicated person coordinating all of their communications. And so she was actually hired part-time at first. So there was an outgoing mayor whom put it in the budget before they left. Kelsey was hired for the part-time position, and then they realized, oh, gosh, we actually need you full-time. And so then she stayed on for full-time.
Okay. And so do they have like a sort of a target date for having this vision? You know, you said that it was work in progress, and I forget the exact phrase. But do you, do they have like a, like a date by which they will say, okay, this is the vision that we had hoped you would, because she's building a whole new program. So when will the program be built? 2025? Is that a bad question?
No, it's, I think I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand your question. Do you mean like having, like a first draft, or not, like a first version of a comprehensive communications plan?
I mean, like if I started a new business unit, I would say, you know, okay, Edna, you've got, by 2025, you know, the, the thing is built, okay? And we have product going out the door, and we know we're going to lose money for a while and so on. But, you know, by 2026, we're, the machinery is going to be doing what we intended it to do. I don't know what that is in their case, but, you know, do they have like specific targets that they were trying to get to in 2019? And they recognize that it will take X number of years. And I'm sorry if I'm using the machinery and, you know, metaphor. But it's, whether it's soft or hard, where there, there needs to be like, we have this goal, and we're trying to hit it by this particular date. And I just wondered what it was, rather than saying, oh, boy, we're putting out newsletters and...
Yeah, no, that helps. So thank you for clarifying. And I would say, yeah, that, to me, that would seem like their first version of a strategic communications plan. And that's a question I can follow up.
You said that much better than...
No. I have more time to think.
And I think, you know, I think a lot of, the point is, is that it takes time to, to build out a fully integrated and comprehensive communications plan.
And I want to know how long it's...
Yeah.
Well, it's, and I think it probably depends on, you know, the amount of resources that you want to allocate to it. And you are, you're making continual improvements as you go. So it's not like you're not, you're just doing the plan and not doing any outward engagement or communications. But you're kind of, you're, you're building the car as you're driving it, I guess, to use another metaphor.
Councilmember Harris, I just looked this up. So Edmonds 2024 general fund budget is $52 million, so about twice... So Edmonds 2024 general fund budget is $52 million, so about twice.
Running the, the, the budget, the communication budget, how much does she have to work for?
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't know that. But I would, I just, I guess I'd make that point, that their city budget is about twice the size of ours overall.
I knew that. That's why I'm just wondering what their?
Right. Councilmember Mahoney.
On the focus groups, in the particular, the business and the neighborhood, the folks, what was the demographics of those groups? Just out of curiosity. Do you have any of the specifics, like age, you know, race, that kind of thing?
We didn't collect any demographic information, but I would say, you know, observation, it was mostly older and, I mean, I hate to, I don't want to, I don't want to, like I said, we didn't collect any demographic information, so my observation, however, is that it was, there was a, a, a specific group of folks that participated, and most, I would say, were, you know, had lived in the city for a while and were, you know, over the age of 40, I would guess would say, most people.
And then, of course, you know, we saw you at the farmer's market encouraging there. I'm going to ask the same question. What was kind of the overall demographic observation there?
At the farmer's market? I don't, I?
Who were participating in any of the surveys?
Oh, in the surveys, yeah. So the surveys, we did collect demographic information, and there, there, I guess, the, we were overrepresented. If you look at citywide demographics, there were higher representation from females, there were higher representation from 45 and older, and I'm trying to think of, I mean, those are kind of the two key things that stuck out in, when comparing kind of citywide demographics.
Okay, thank you. That's all ahead.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just a, just a couple of questions. City of Edmonds that you picked as a peer, they're about 10,000, 10,000 population more than us, but their general fund is double what ours is. The demographics of the area are very different than what Des Moines are. How did those differences play into her ability to give us some good advice on how to address our communication issues?
You, I guess, so, well, first off, we had a hard time coming up with one city, and that, because there's no, there's no great single comparative city. We wanted to pick a city that had a communications manager. We wanted to pick a city that was relatively close by, that had the access to I-5, that had waterfront access. We did, we didn't compare, we didn't look at, you know, the citywide, you know, budgets as, in terms of a comparison, but felt like that, in a general sense, that we could get some good information from, from talking with the City of Edmonds.
Okay, but just from your standpoint, is there anything that, that you would recommend based on the differences?
Oh, in terms of, well, obviously, you know, city budget plays a big role in how you, you look at, you know, if you create, if you create a position, a communications person position, and so that, that could take longer, it could, than, than the City of Edmonds did. I will say that I, I work with smaller communities. I just finished a project for the city of Washougal, which is about half the size of Des Moines, and they have, they actually have two people that work kind of in the communications space. So it varies depending on the community and their priorities and kind of their, their form of government, so it's, there, there's not a great apples-to-apples comparison overall, but I think we felt like we could learn from talking to Edmonds, and had, they had some, some lessons that we could pass on here, and think that, I mean, overall, we still feel that it's, we'll talk more about it, but feel that, you know, having someone that has accountability and ownership and communications under one umbrella, if you can, you know, find the resources, do it is a good investment to make.
Okay, and, yeah, I mean, we like to think Des Moines is unique, so, you know. And that's what makes us special. The, the survey, you get 309 responses. That to me seems pretty good. Is it? I don't know.
Yeah, I would say comparatively, that's a pretty good response rate. So I think it's, it indicates that the community is interested and engaged and wants to be more engaged, and it was interesting to, to kind of go through the results of the survey and see some of those key themes that came out from it, so.
And again, kind of getting back to the demographics of it, and I don't mean to pick on you by any means here, but, you know, it was very Caucasian and older. It trended that way, let's just say. Do you have, how do we try to get younger people more engaged in the city, or should we wait until the recommendations? But that's, you know, that's sort of the big question is, where's the engagement at that younger, more diverse population, different backgrounds? How do we get them involved?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I, I think you're right. Typically, on any survey that's conducted, it's harder, the, you're more likely to skew older, and it's hard to get younger people to take surveys, and I think part of the, it's kind of working on building relationships with those different subpopulations that don't necessarily get involved, and the younger, younger groups is, is one of those. And, you know, social media is, is an obvious method that younger folks are engaged with, so more, more, more methods like that. And again, you know, going out into the community, going where those different groups are and engaging with them there, rather than, you know, expecting them to always come to you, I think is an important note.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'll add in, like, I'm really excited that council members are asking this question, just how do we expand and really hear from members that maybe don't always engage in this kind of process? And that's where, yeah, we've talked a lot about, like, having these diverse methods of reaching people and using different tools to meet them where they're, sort of, understanding your population, different audiences. And Chris really touched on something that is that kind of long-term relationship building, and it's knowing, like, okay, through this survey, this initial first kind of work into an intentional process to continue to improve the city's communications. We know we didn't get to hear from folks who were younger. We know we didn't get to hear from folks who maybe use languages other than English. That's a great place to start. So, all right, how do we partner with our community members, building genuine, meaningful relationship, and then showing up again and again, showing that action, that follow-through? And it's, I'm really excited because this is just, this is the start. This is not just a start. The city's been doing an amazing job, clearly, can, doing the work that they can, and it's an opportunity to, to have that reflection, to pause, and then to kind of refine a little bit and look at those methods. Asking, I think, is just a great place to start. How would you like us to communicate with you? What would make it meaningful to you? Is it hosting a dinner? I've seen some very creative ways of, like, maybe young people with their friends hosting a dinner, the city providing a stipend, and having the food to ask specific questions to get that engagement, seeing, and then following through, coming back to the community saying, hey, this is what we heard you say, we can't do everything, but this is what we were able to do. And then the things that we can't act upon, this was why. So that's just as important, I think, as, as part of that communications, this relationship building, is the follow-through, the consistency, and showing what people are getting out of them sharing this information. And so it's, it's a great opportunity we have as communications engagement people. It's like, all right, really, it boils down to how do we build a meaningful relationship with people and understanding them, and knowing that, you know, government has a way of sometimes being intimidating and not accessible. And so being honest about that, just recognizing there's policies, there's procedures, there's a formality to it, and how can we make that more approachable and less intimidating for folks who might not be as familiar with these proceedings? So, yeah, there's lots of opportunities, for sure.
And just one last question, if I may. As I understood at the beginning of this, there was a, in your final draft, there will be an assessment of how much this is going to cost and where we might have some room in our budget for that. Did I understand that correctly or, or not? Because I love all these ideas. They're great ideas. Trying to find another staff person, trying to find that, you know, somebody who's got the time to be on social media, you know, all the time, because there are so many different ways to do it, you know, there's, there's a cost factor here, and can we at least look to you for some sense of what that cost may be to do some of these suggestions?
I mean, I would say that the detailed cost estimates would be a next step. I mean, certainly, we could provide kind of, you know, high rate, a high level, you know, kind of, some of these options are obviously very kind of, not easy, but that can be implemented with almost no cost. And then the, obviously, the big cost item would be developing a, you know, a position that you would then fund on a permanent basis. But developing specific costs were not part of our scope for.
Okay.
So I can, I can add to that. Thanks, Chris. So they'll be providing us with the final draft and the recommendations, and then it's going to be everyone else at this table that we're going to have to figure out the costs and implementation. So that's going to continue through the budget process, and then just moving forward.
Just looking for raised hands.
Okay.
So, go ahead, Councilmember Oxiger.
I guess, I guess I'm going to follow along with Councilmember Steinmetz's questions regarding demographics. Did you look in the case of either cities with regard to the school district demographics? Because one of the interesting things about Des Moines is that I believe the, was it 49 or 51% is the, the level of whites in the city of Des Moines now, but the school district is only 17.4% white. And so when it comes to dealing with questions with regard to communication, because we know that young people use different communication patterns, and also with regard to diversity issues, I think that's a, that's something that is very helpful, is to go in and look at those school district numbers. And they're all available on the superintendent, the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction under their report card section, and you can pull down to not just the Highline School District, for example, you can pull each one of the individual elementary schools and that sort of thing. So that's an extremely helpful.
We, we did not look at specific school demographics as, as part of the assessment, but definitely that, that would be, you know, again, a, a great next step as you determine, you know, again, how to get out into the community and reach that, that younger population and, and populations that speak languages other than English or have other underrepresented characteristics.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grayson. Councilmember Grayson Matsui.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight, I appreciate it. I wanted to know, in terms of your short-term recommendations, if you could speak more to folks going through what could be complicated governmental processes. We heard about permitting as one of those things, and I can't remember the other department that was called out, might have been public safety. But to me, those go back to managing expectations, like, if you inquire about something to a city staff person, you think, how much time must go by until I get a response? Same for a city council member, by the way. So I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit more about how we can manage expectations when folks reach out to us and expect an answer.
Well, I mean, that's kind of getting at our, our recommendations, so we'd be happy, do you want us to dive into those at this point, or?
Any other questions?
Or is there any other questions?
So, so you are going to continue on to the next segment of recommendations? So before we get there, right, then, Councilmember Harris, for a second time.
So Councilmember Oxiger referenced children in Highline, and there's also the Federal Way Schools as well. But if you have a majority, you know, the, the demographics that he pointed out apply to the parents of those children. And anecdotally, I cannot recall the last time one of those parents engaged at a city council meeting or with communities in general on a lot of these surveys. And so there is this divide that we sort of dance around a bit. It's not only age, it's the people who are parents with children, they are non-white, they do not speak English in many cases. So, and it's just easy to not speak candidly as to, they're the people that require the energy, okay? They're the least likely to show up at a city council meeting and so on, and they are, they're the future, they're the next generation. So you don't have to do a deep dive statistically, you don't, you simply?
Councilmember Harris, can I interrupt for a second? We will have discussion time later, and so if you've got a specific question for them, moving on.
My, my suggestion would be?
But it's just a question time.
It is a question. I would, okay, fine, great, I think I've made my point.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think we will get to some of the, the points that you've been making in our recommendations, so we can revisit.
Okay, and then I do have a question in regard to, and maybe you're going to cover this later, but in regard to specific tools to use to reach this generation that we're talking about, because it seems to almost be a barrier, like at age 40, to be able to engage? And so will there be the availability of some kind of follow-up, either via a class or a webinar, or some tools that, an array of tools that can be helpful for anybody to engage with the under-40 generation? Do you have like a 2.0, this is where we go from here, and this is how to engage with this generation?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly include that in our, in our final report, if that's of interest. I mean, there, there's, again, there are, there's no one silver bullet, but I think there are lots of different, I think the, you'll hear us hit upon the importance of diversity and doing different things to, to engage with different audiences, so that's definitely part of it, but yes.
All right, thank you. If there aren't any other questions, we'll move on to the recommendation portion, correct? That's the next portion? All right, thank you.
All right, so as we mentioned, we, we are going to walk through the recommendations. We have short, mid, and long-term recommendations that we have included in the presentation. And I would say, as a preface to, to hearing these, to think about, as you hear them from us, about when you, when we have discussion afterwards, about both the, the timing that we're recommending, so, because we're interested in getting your feedback on whether you think the timing of our different kind of categories works, if there's priorities within those recommendations that you want to see highlighted. So those are just a couple of the things that we're interested in, in hearing from after we present these to you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nancy, who will start with our, our short-term recommendations.
Okay, and drumroll, please, our first short-term recommendation, what we were just talking on. Before I jump into this, so like Chris was saying, these are recommendations, just with the context and the information we have, we think can be started, implemented within a year. And then these stars that we have up here, I also did want to point out where, we, I, we put them on the recommendations, the items that city staff members were already starting on before we even shared these recommendations. So just another nod to city staff members and the city that they're, they are continually looking for opportunities where they can move things forward to keep improving communications. And so as we were hearing the things that staff members were already doing, we wanted to acknowledge that they were doing this before we shared our recommendations, because they were still in draft form. So we were just talking about what is one of the things that the city can look to do, increasing the variety of tools and methods to share timely, accurate, and to share timely, accurate information about city business with community members. And so, one of those things is to expand the social media presence. And I know we've talked about this a couple of times. But this recommendation doesn't necessarily mean be on every single social media platform there is. There's too many. There's Facebook, TikTok, Instagram, Reddit. So many different forums, ex formerly Twitter, that the city can't, could look at potential tools. But this recommendation, I think, is, again, that pause to think about your audience members, to think about your community members. What platforms are they on? We heard from different people, like, great, there's a Facebook group. And maybe there's more consistent posting. Maybe there's more of a cohesive branding to the post. Maybe even considering one more, like Instagram or something. So trying to reach the demographics that are below the forty-four age range. I love Instagram. I'll just point that out. Something else that we heard is to share weekly or bi-weekly city updates on city communications channels. And we heard that Tim is already sharing weekly city managers' reports and sharing that on Facebook, on the website, and I think via email, is what we heard. And so, that's something that we heard that people wanted to have more of or as a recommendation. And that's something that the city is already beginning to implement. Reviewing the City Currents magazine for opportunities to serve even more community interests and needs. And so, we heard that is already a great resource that the city has. And we heard that people want more of it. So, you know, is there a possibility that maybe it's published more frequently than a quarter? Maybe not. We know that there are budget implications of that. But it was exciting to hear that people do value this already as one tool and method of communications that the city is already using. And thinking about, how do we review it and start a conversation of how can we keep evolving the City Currents magazine so it can continue to serve our community? We also heard another method, digital communications, is having different email listservs with specific topics. So maybe one just for general news, but maybe one on projects, development projects that are going on. Maybe one specific for folks with businesses in the area so that they have kind of like one email that they can opt into or out of that will serve their particular interests. And then, what else? So we have also scheduling regular state of the city reports or town hall-style meetings. So another touch point for people to be able to engage with city staff members, city council members. And so, those were some of the things that we heard. The next one is provide, oh, sorry. There's one more at the bottom. Went a little too quickly. So providing consistent briefing-level reports and packets to all council members ahead of council meetings so that all council members have access to the same information to be prepared to make informed decisions and have, be ready for conversations. And this has a star next to it because that is something the city is already working on and implementing. Okay, now we can go to, thank you. Okay. So another one is to implement an accessible community feedback process. So having some different ways that community members can do this. The folks can come in person, maybe have a physical comment box at city hall so people can write something down and put it into the box. And also, having an online comment submission area as well. When looking at the city of admins on their website, they have online forms for general feedback and comments and questions. So that's one forum. And then, they also have another forum that is just for website feedback that people can also submit to help give specific feedback. Another thing we felt like the city could work on pretty quickly is updating the city organization chart with roles and responsibilities. So having one version for city staff to help orient new staff members and clarify whom that they can connect with for specific needs in each department. So sometimes, it can be easy to know who on your team to go to within a specific department. But maybe you're working with a different department and wanting to collaborate. So having a clear understanding of where those relationships and connections lie. And then, having a more public-facing one that's easy to use for community members to help them decide which departments or maybe specific staff members they can connect with for a specific need or concern. And then, not just doing this one time, calling it done, but having a process to have it be like an annual task that city members, staff people, look at annually and make sure that they're updating so it can be current. And then, we also heard, or feel like, city website updates to help improve navigation and user experience. So something that we heard a couple of times as well through our feedback is that, oh, one specific thing is having a, having the events calendar be just more prominent and larger on the main homepage. And if we're able to have it filterable, maybe by, like, city-hosted events or community events and celebrations. So folks can go to the calendar, maybe see everything. Or maybe they're just interested in city-hosted events or a meeting coming up. They can filter that and be able to find that information. And then, the improving the website navigation based on user, based on user feedback. This one, we know can go different ways. Like, people kind of have different ways of engaging with different websites. So using foundations of user experience, like, design processes, but also having something like the website feedback forum to maybe tweak something that can be easier. So making the events calendar more larger, maybe in a calendar format on the homepage. Seems like something that would be quick to be, not quick, but be able to be something that we can update on the website. Another comment we heard and recommendation is that it is accessible and ADA compliant. And Bonnie shared with us that the website is about ninety percent at ADA compliance. And they're working to get to a hundred percent and should get there in the next.
Soon.
Soon. In the next, in the next, soon. It's a very technical timing jargon there. And then, one other thing that we heard from the focus, business focus group is creating an easy-to-use guide or process manual for the Doing Business webpage that the city has. And then, that would help people kind of have a guide. Everyone's kind of reading the same thing, has the same information to start with. And then, including a contact information for additional business-related support or specific questions that may not be addressed there. So, well, like, those are the things that we could tackle. And then, also, developing more robust, consistent onboarding training for city council members and for staff. We heard a suggestion to explore the Association of Washington Cities as a resource for different trainings and more education. And then, create policies that govern staff response times with an emphasis on customer service. And so, you know, we don't have a specific, yes, get back in forty-eight hours because that doesn't seem like that is guided by the people who are doing the work day-to-day and your specific circumstances. But having this conversation on what is something reasonable? How can we share this expectation with everyone so that community members have that expectation? And folks who are working on city staff have that expectation as well.
All right. So moving on to our kind of what we're calling midterm recommendations that could occur between one and two years out. The first one that we've identified is developing and refining a set of community engagement guidelines. So that might include policies or guidelines for, you know, public notice. If you're having a public meeting, you have specific guidelines for the amount of lead time that you provide notice on a public meeting, different ways that you inform the community about that public meeting, whether it's, you know, social media posts, a certain amount of time before it, mailing out postcards, whatever the method is, kind of enshrining all those different kind of engagement guidelines into a document that all city staff and council members have and are aware of and can use to guide their interactions. And again, that would include items such as, you know, to the top of accessibility. When you hold public open houses or forums or public meetings, always holding them in the evening on a weeknight doesn't always work for different members of the community. So having guidelines for providing different times of day, different days of the week, even other things that could include, like, providing childcare, that sort of thing. So just having a formal document that you have for how you interact with the public that you can refer to. And then, this one that we began to talk about already is beginning to create a full-time communications position. This obviously includes a number of steps, including, you know, funding, you know, budgeting for it, working with council and staff to create a detailed position description. And I think it's a, you know, an important conversation to have. But we feel strongly that, again, having, you know, one person that has ownership and accountability and can work across all departments to help kind of develop a cohesive and, you know, comprehensive strategy for how you communicate and interact with the public. We really see, we heard this throughout all the different engagement methods we used. And so, feel like this is a strong one to consider in terms of a recommendation to act upon. So next time, looking at long-term recommendations, again, this would be something that goes out over more than two years. And this, this one about developing a comprehensive strategic communications plan is really, comes after bringing on a communications person. We see that the communications person you would hire would be responsible for working with all the different departments and staff and council to develop a strategy that is more proactive than responsive, that has common themes through it, guidance for, again, for different engagement policies, practices and strategies that the city will use moving forward. So, again, the, it's, while that person would have ownership in developing it, obviously, this has to happen with the city. And also, I think, more broadly, the community as well to make sure that people are heard about how the different ways that they want to be involved and communicated with.
Can I add one more quick thing? This one also ties in nicely, I think, with Councilmember Harris's comment earlier before we went to recommendations because he literally described my family's experience growing up. I grew up in the South. Were a family of immigrants. And, yeah, they did not engage. My family didn't engage because they didn't feel like they were welcomed or invited or that it was a safe space. And also, that they, our mentality was just like, don't rock the boat. Just keep your heads down, assimilate. And this process wasn't for us. And so, thinking about the strategy for communications for engagement, this person, the city, can think about that family, a family like mine, where how do we make this space more inviting for them? How do we show that their voice actually matters and that it matters that they are able to share? So we create a community that includes this, these different demographics, all the people and populations that call Des Moines home. And so, this communications plan, you know, it takes two years because you think on top of all the work that you're already doing, all the departments that are already doing, asking, how can we come together and collaborate to make sure that each department's needs are met, the communications and information they're trying to get out is met? All into one plan to have this roadmap is going to take some time. But having that kind of relationship and, and thinking about all your community members, the needs of your different departments, will make a plan that isn't just going to be shelved, that you're going to have this buy-in and support. And it's going to be informed by the people who are actually doing the work and have that need. So I hope that helps a little bit for your earlier comment.
All right.
Right, is that the end of your presentation?
That is the end.
All right. So I think what we're going to do right now, because this is a recommendation section. Most of the feedback may be in the form of recommendations or an amendment to that. Instead of breaking for more questions or comments from the council right now, I think we would like to take public comment. And then, after that, the council will begin to engage in discussion. Okay? So right now is a time for public comment. And we're going to be taking comments related to the communications presentation only. After offering your comment in person, really, anybody, please feel free to follow up in writing, if you wish, to the. Tim, where would they send that if they wanted to follow up in writing?
They can send it to Bonnie.
Okay. Everybody hear that? So if you wanted to follow up in writing, if you are only watching this, cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov, you can follow up in writing. Okay. Please keep your comments respectful. Speaking or acting in a disruptive manner is prohibited. Anybody speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be removed from the meeting. And please state your name and your city of residence. And you will have three minutes. So the first person who signed up to speak is Victoria Andrews.
Thank you again, Victoria Andrews, resident of Des Moines. And thank you for the opportunity to be part of the dialogue. A couple of notes on the presentation. I was part of the resident focus group. And there were many more than seven of us there. Perhaps a sign that, a sign and sheet might have been misplaced. Our table was full. Also, there is a huge difference between a city manager form of government and a stronger form of government. And I wonder if Sea-Tac, our next-door neighbor, which does have a city manager form of government, wasn't a more comparable city? It sounded like there were a couple of options presented to staff and they chose admins. Just wondering. The report I found was shocking. Just kidding. Nothing in it was shocking. We out here and all of you sitting there have been stating what we need for a long time now. Quoting from the focus group summary, "Both groups strongly recommended the city hire a full-time communications director, an external candidate, who would be a city staff member. Additionally, both groups want clear, consistent communications, yada, yada." If there was anything in the report that I disagree with, and I do disagree strongly, it's waiting for one to two years to hire that external communications director. That person is needed immediately to implement the short-term recommendations to a tapped-out staff. Your HR director can create, finalize, and post this job description while the outsourced headhunter firm is handling the search for our next city manager. As soon as the new city manager is hired, his or her first major hire can be from among the finalists with a director position. One thing is abundantly clear. You need money. You spent seventy-five thousand dollars for this study and much of it you already knew. Hire a communications director, external, please, and overhaul the website. Those are two fundable needs, not one. The council could have put a placeholder in the budget before it was finalized, but you breezily overruled that idea. So now, you have to do it retroactively. And so, my request is, please don't kick the can further down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Next up, we have Carl Dombek.
Thank you, Mayor Buxton. My name is Carl Dombek. I live in Des Moines. And I have, for a total of twenty-two years, in two installments, going all the way back to when people used to pronounce it "Des Moines" all the time. Now, to provide some context for my remarks, I spent twenty years in corporate communications, public relations, and media relations. I served as the in-house communications leader for companies, including a division of General Electric, where my duties included managing the outside PR and communications firms that we used. My background also includes twenty years as a journalist and broadcaster. And I am passionate about communications. Now, the report we heard, and as Victoria mentioned, I agree with, contains a number of excellent recommendations. And while I won't attempt to address all of them, there are a couple that leapt out. I am especially pleased that the report recommends that the city hire a full-time communications professional. Because too often, the outside PR firms I have dealt with have tried to place their own people in companies and organizations to be the communications leader and external spokesman. In my experience, nobody understands an organization better than somebody who's spending forty hours a week steeped in that organization, building relationships with their colleagues and counterparts at other agencies. And because of the value this brings, I believe that, like Victoria said, hiring a full-time communicator should be a short-term priority, not a midterm. Now, I fully support designing the webpage or redesigning the webpage, designating a Facebook page or the city website, which would serve as a landing page or a table of contents with a list of news items, upcoming events, things that people should take notice of. Each city department could post what I would make analogous to a headline with a link to the fuller article, which is hosted on their departmental website. Go to the main landing page, which is what we should be focusing on publishing and publicizing, and so that you can see something from HR or the Police Department, Stephen Underwood Day being the current example, and read more about it on the Police Department's website. Updating City Currents magazine should also be a priority. And I would recommend moving away from the print edition to an entirely online edition to save money and time on the publication and make it more, well, current. The cost savings could be even greater if the decision is made to move from quarterly to either monthly, or I would recommend bimonthly. I think every two months would be sufficient. The report has also had several other solid, actionable recommendations. But there's an issue that it only hints at. And that is the question of whether there is what I would call a culture of communication within the city. Now, I've been volunteering with the Police Department since 2018. And in those six. Now, I've been volunteering with the police department since 2018 and in those six years, I've also reached out to a number of individuals and departments to volunteer my services. I've contacted the senior center. I've offered my writing, proofreading and write, and editing skills to City Currents. And I've contacted the activity center to bring to their attention information on this marquee that was a month out of date. That's only three emails and I realize that's not a big sample, but not one person even acknowledged my contact. It's not difficult to hit reply, to say, "Thanks for reaching out, we're good at the moment", and then hit send. And that seems to me as an indication of what may be a greater challenge, or it may simply be everybody's doing all they can do and they can't, they don't have any more bandwidth. But getting everybody to embrace the value of active communication has to come down from the top. It can't come up from a communications director, it must flow from the top down. Now, I'd be pleased to speak further with any of you offline as my time is exhausted. So, subject to your questions, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Carl. Next up, we have Bill Lynn Scott.
Bill Lynn Scott from Des Moines and, and I'm the old guy attending council meetings, yes. And I, I am looking for young people too, to come and attend council meetings. And, you know, when I was younger, we were raising five kids and I know the demands that they have out there and if they have to choose between a PTA meeting and a council meeting, they're going to go to the PTA meeting. But there are tools out there that could make that easier, that, the report I think is nicely done, we, there, most of the stuff there, we did kind of feel we knew about. When I look at a couple of things tonight that I heard, we're, we're always talking about demographics with any of these studies and I think the only time we've had a plan that had, what do you call it, a valid survey, I think it was the Parks Plan, but, you know, everything else, they'll mention it's not a valid sampling, you know, and if we, if we challenge that each time, we ought to be requiring it in our plans going forward. Because I think that is important to give us truth on, you know, who we're reaching and who we're hearing from. When I look at going forward, I guess I would hope, when I, when I, I would like to say, go place that communication position first, but actually, we need to place the city manager first. It would be hard for me to understand that the, the new individual for city manager wouldn't be involved in this section of the, the communications person. So, that timeline up there where I was saying, oh man, we ought to go faster than this, I'm not sure that can happen. But we need to go fast with the city manager and get that done so that the rest of this can fall into place. What I have, one other thought and I can't come up with it now, that's the trouble of being old. Oh, I know what it was. There's a ton of things in there we could be doing right now and, and, and I hope that happens, you know. There's, there's subjects out there where we need public meetings on. That Green Street on 223rd, we need to have a meeting on that, just like we had on the steps. And, and, and we know it won't be complete, but we need to hear about what the options are, what they're looking at. And so I hope while we're going through the steps, getting the right positions in place and the right people on, we're also moving forward and doing some of these improvements like our interim city manager did with his reports. Thank you very much, Tim. And so that the public can see progress is being made. That's it. Oh, man, that's good.
Perfect timing. No kidding. Next up, Steve Quinn.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Buxton, members of city council. I'm Steve Quinn from Des Moines. As I noted in previous testimony, I have several years' experience in government communications. So I want to thank the city for posting the draft. It's a tremendous start in laying a foundation towards strong communication and transparency. It really is. But as strong as the draft as it is, there are still gaps that I think a roundtable discussion with communication specialists can fill. I know the city manager likes sports references, so right now I think the city has a first and 10, but it's on its own 10-yard line. I don't think anyone here would be surprised what was published. I'm not. If anyone is, they're probably not paying attention. And sadly, that largely reflects my experience in living here almost two years and trying to engage members of the city staff. Efforts have been met mostly with silence, no response to emails, no response to phone messages. When I have been able to engage, either in-person or on-phone, I've been met with petulance and indifference. And I can, I, I can cite specific dates, times, places and people, not here though. Basic acts of courtesy that most of us learned as children just seem to elude many city employees. One even told me I was free to move. Among the three who did engage with dialogue and showing an aptitude for listening, two no longer work here. The third actually listened, looked into it, said there was a problem and solved it, probably saving lives. So I hope you're taking this seriously. This is a wide-open wound and calls for critical care. There is one mistake in the report that was cited earlier. The focus group of residents did have 11 participants. I was among them. Again, probably a signup sheet, there was two of them, one of them might have been misplaced, so probably an honest mistake. But I will say that there were some problems with the focus group. Participation was offered only to those available at 1:30 PM. So when the deputy mayor speaks about engaging younger people, having it after five might have drawn more interest. One woman on social media said specifically, gee, I would like to raise my hand, but I got to work. Focus group, and I've done them, led them, should really have no more than five people, not 10 or 15, otherwise voices get drowned out. And, and that's what happened in the, in the, in the one with the residents. And, you know, there was, this presentation really didn't reflect the candor and the tone of the focus group. I, I wish it had a little bit more. And as a result, we never got through the entire agenda. I think we got through half of it. Looking to Edmonds, I don't think that's a bad call. I mean, there, there really is no one-for-one city. If you really wanted a city, my old town of Juneau, Alaska, same population, similar budgets, waterfront city, can, can offer a lot of lessons. Mount Lake Terrace has some very creative communications techniques that I would go after. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Okay. So next, we're going to move into council discussion and questions and interaction with regard to what we've just finished listening to. And just as a reminder, that the goal here is not to produce direction for staff or next steps. The goal here is to look at this report and see if there's, give feedback if there's something that we think is missing or how it can be enhanced before we really receive the final product, which is slated to come back to us a week, two weeks, a month, about a week? Okay. So just to let those know who, who maybe are thinking about following up in writing, to know that the final draft is probably going to come back to us pretty quick. So if you're thinking about giving some input in writing, please do it quickly. All right. Open for discussion. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, one of the things that I'm kind of wrestling with is, and I think it's a, you know, hiring a full-time communications position is a great idea. And it's good to at least have most of the city communicating through that, but there are particular things for the PD, for the police department, that, that are fairly unique. I mean, at least in my experience, most of, most police departments handle external communications themselves. If there's an interview, if there's a big incident, you know, they have somebody who can go on the camera in front of local news or give a statement. And I don't know, I think that's something to be considered, whether you really want an external communication person trying to answer police department questions or not. So, that's, that's just one of the things that, that really struck me about that recommendation. I'm sorry?
Just real quick, yeah, so our police department has a public information officer. So that would be, that would be who we'd rely on for those communications and this, this person would be for basically everybody else.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that, that distinguishment was not made in the report or in, or in the recommendations. You know, I do think that there are a number of things that, you know, could be implemented very quickly if we have the staff to do it. I, I mean, I think people are really, really busy doing their job and adding another hat is going to be a real challenge. And I don't really want to do that to the staff, so one thing that would be helpful are, or is, what can council members do? We can't do the staff's job, but there may be some specific suggestions that you have for council members, even though we have full-time jobs, or some of us do. You know, that would help with the communication piece of it. And so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to hear from all kinds of sources about specific things that, that council members could do. Updating the Currents magazine, I don't know that whole process very well, but we do, there is a publisher that we work with. I don't know if he's been consulted and brought into the discussion or not, but it would kind of make sense if there was at least a conversation about that. You know, the suggestion box is obviously something that can be done pretty quickly and so, the online suggestion box or updating the website is a much bigger thing to go about. And then, once we get back to this idea of city branding and strong branding, you know, do we need to discuss what is the brand? How do you go about that? Having that discussion of, you know, what, what, what do we want to be the brand of this city? And, and how do we portray that? And, you know, that can be everything from changing the logo to changing the name, you know, depending upon what we want to communicate to the world at large with that brand. So, I think some guidelines or some suggestions as to that bigger communication would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Harris.
So, is this, you know, subject to the speak twice kind of thing in your mind, Mayor?
In my mind, it, it is and then a, you know, I'll go around the table and then a third time would be up to everybody else wanting to continue to hear.
So, you know, it may be just by the by, but I'm struck by the fact that we ourselves cannot have a free-flowing discussion, which I believe was the original intent of study sessions. I've been watching these meetings long enough to know that that is indeed the way these things used to go. People used to just talk back and forth and so on and I see no great value to this moving the chairs around and I'll drop that, but let's see here. Mount Lake Terrace, good idea. It's a, I think it's a good comparison. I have not a fan of immediately hiring a communications director, simply because at our big planning meeting, I was told that we might be as much as 125% on the reactor. Since we do not know the resources we have to play with, it's impossible for me as a decision-maker to know what can be implemented. I mean, that's the most basic thing. It's not just a question of money, it's also a question of resources. And we don't know enough about the inner workings of the city, only to, to the extent that we're told that everybody's doing their best. Well, if everybody's already doing 105 on the reactor, then, like, I, I, I literally don't know what to do with it. I'll just mention that, you know, we were talking about an event planning kind of a thing and to me, that's sort of an analogous position and that's like, you know, half a million a year if you give people support staff and ancillary stuff. So just really quickly, I would say that I would, a communications director has to be at the pleasure of the new city manager. I, I can't imagine making that kind of choice for, pre-deciding that. We should have Zoom and I'm struck, I'm struck that it didn't come up. If you want to increase public engagement, bring back Zoom. We had it and we should have it, we already have the infrastructure for it. We should have an integrated calendar, we should have a phone app, we should have a best-in-class phone app. And we should simply invite the two major vendors of municipal software to present to us because they already offer those kinds of products. If you can get the city on everyone's phone, you will immediately double the amount of communication. I'm not sure how many people here are under the age of 50, but basically, I haven't gotten an email from anyone like in their, you know, unless they absolutely had to in years. That's not how people under 40 communicate, they use their phone. And, and we can put all of that stuff into an app, it's already an off-the-shelf product. Our, our good friends in C-TAC have a, a thing called a council member information request. It's basically a running database of all relevant information requests from council members over the years. So when a new council member onboards, they, rather than taking staff time, they can simply look through that and they'll find out all kinds of useful stuff going back years and years, rather than, you know, having to ask the same damn question over and over again to staff. And to my mind, that would be the single biggest useful tool for new electeds ever invented. It is also an off-the-shelf product, it's very similar to a public records request database and I think, and in, in summary, basically, I think this is, I would say this, but I think that this is largely something that we can solve with a one-time spend of off-the-shelf software products until such time as we can get to the human element. I understand that people automatically go to the communications director, but frankly, it's because most of us are AARP members and that's where our minds go. We go to humans, we go to websites, the world, websites are, that's not even the way the world works anymore. And we should, if we're spending all this time and money on this stuff, we should at least be investing in things that are not already outmoded. And I'm done.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to do is, I want to acknowledge Bonnie Wilkins. I think you've done an awesome job considering all the circumstances and everything to try to do your best to effectively communicate. It's tough. Something I've always told the public is we don't have a town newspaper anymore, a consistent way to communicate with folks. Looking over this, and I, and I want to thank you guys for your efforts in this and I appreciate the, the work you did. And I know and I saw your efforts to try to reach as much of the community as you could. You know, it could always be better, we all know that, but I appreciate what you did. Couple of things, expanding the city's social media presence, again, recommendations like Instagram, but I'd also say this, one of the problems we have is like Facebook pages and so forth and blogs control the message, not us. And in many cases, the administrator wouldn't let a story through or there was some controls and I came across something where like booths in Facebook, you know, where you can pay a fee to get everybody in your zip code. So I'd like to see recommendations on that because I think it's a more effective way for us to reach everyone in the zip code, including a lot of the folks that everybody was talking today, that if they have access to social media, then there might be messages to them that is straight from us and not a, not a modified version or something like that. As far as the City Currents, I thought it was interesting and I do believe one day to go paperless. I do know though, that a lot of our citizens are, in, in our age community, as I'll put it, love written, they miss the newspaper. In fact, when I go to Wesley, they're reading the newspaper, so they want to see that. As far as frequency, more than a quarterly, the only thing I call out is they're about $15,000 a month and that money could be used everywhere, other, other places. I thought that- I thought that, I love the public comment submission thing, both online and a box as far as suggestion. I thought the, update the city organization roles and responsibilities, I thought another thing would be development of some kind of decision tree. I want a permit, this type of permit. Da-da-da-da. Maybe there's a couple of questions that leads them to the correct person. That's intuitive. You know, the city website can always improve. I'm not gonna, you know, it's, it's, technology changes faster than we can keep up with it, and there's costs associated, but always support that. I love the easy guide for businesses as well. I think that's a great suggestion. I'd like to, we're trying to create a venue to bring business to our community, and I'd like ways to make the transition easier for them. I think the, the staff response time and some kind of policy, but I think that's the city manager and the department manager, or in the, in the staff leads, leads in those particular areas should come up with those things because they can assess their staff, what their workloads and so forth are. As far as, as far as, you know, I like the idea about community engagements, the notification process of lead times, but I can tell you, for instance, I know the Marina one was notified in December when we were talking about it when I was mayor and we were setting that up. It, it was amazing because the day of, people were going, this just sprung on us. I never heard about this thing. It was in all kinds of publications. So as again, it's no town newspaper, no consistent message. So there, it'd be great to have that, and, and we can go back to that we did that. But the fact is, is people still need, we need people to receive and so forth, and there has to be some kind of communication. As far as, I agree with my colleagues that the communications position needs to be hired. And I, and I liked some of the comments, particularly from Ms. Andrews, that if we can cut some corners and get some candidates for the new city manager to consider, so at least we can shorten the curve, that would be beneficial. And as far as recommendations on the budget and so forth, we've had discussions on that and finding a way and making some exceptions is okay with me. And, and I think it's a, I think it's a ownership of not only the city council and who they'll be in the future, staff and the residents to visit communication on an annual basis and assess things and so forth. There'll always be every, it's, it's like, everybody wants sidewalks on their street, but nobody's bothered to consider the cost. If we were to put sidewalks on every street, we'd bankrupt ourselves in a week, right? So there's, everybody wants certain things and they want different things, but there's a reality. So some of that level setting needs to occur in the long-term planning. But, uh, but, but in, having a communication, kind of a, a study session and involve the public is a recommendation I have on an annual basis, and that's, that's what I had. But I really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Again, thank you very much. I, I appreciate the amount of effort that you put into getting this information from our community. And I think we have talked quite a bit about the limitations of the feedback, given the demographic and the sampling that we, was done in that time period. I will say a couple of things. One, I agree that we could lean into technologies that we already have and that we can leverage in a very positive way. For example, in February, I missed the Marina meeting because I was traveling for a funeral, but I did ask if it was going to be filmed. So that other folks who would also miss a meeting at that time and that day could also watch it later on. And unfortunately, that was not available. I also think that there are some simplistic apps, and I'm, and I think that this kind of shows the demographic gap that maybe no one in your feedback groups mentioned apps as a possibility. But we have a code enforcement app in the place that I work that is very simple. You take a picture, there's a pothole here, and I want to report it. It doesn't require anything else besides, I want to report this. And it goes off mysteriously to a city person who does something with that information. The, the resident doesn't need to know any more than that. Just that they've submitted something to code enforcement and hopefully someone will take a look at the report. And so Zoom recordings, posting things in case you missed it. We had a discussion about robust communication strategies at our last meeting. Maybe you weren't here. Here's a recording. It's on YouTube. Go watch it. That's almost free because you've already recorded it. We've already put it on YouTube. We just now need to tell people where to find it. So I would see what technology we can use that already exists, that we're already comfortable with, and maybe some limited mobile technology, like a smaller app, maybe not a comprehensive huge one because that would take quite some time to build. And there could be some off-the-shelf products that work quite well in that area. But I think that some things that we can do in the short term that are highly actionable would be great. And I think service-level agreements for responses, communication expectation that when you get reached out to, that you're going to get back within a certain amount of time would be fabulous. So I hope that more of those things make it into the recommendation. And I do like the idea of maybe having, here are the city managers' recommendations at their level. Here are things that city council can do. Here are things that staff can do. So that they're separated perhaps by audience might be helpful as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
I'm struck by how people will, you know, give me the frowny face when I mention apps and so on. And I would just say again, I would encourage my colleagues to support having the vendors in this space come and present because this is not exactly the Starship Enterprise. They sell these things right now that are comprehensive, and they do everything from permit applications to dog licensing, to public safety, to getting, to, to a comprehensive calendar. And I've noticed that people, whether you're a nine-year-old from Eritrea in a hijab, or you're 85, people just take these apps for granted. You know, they'll say, oh, I prefer having a piece of paper and everything, and that's fine. But then they also whip out their phone and show you how they're engaging with their grandkids and so forth. So people are far more comfortable with technology than we like to believe. And I'll just say, if you want to look at a zero-dollar thing, I hate to, but you know, you walk across the street over to Wesley and the candidate forum, I, you know, I'm sorry, but basically, they, they do the stuff that we could do right now. They put on presentations that are recorded. They have this thing called a cordless mic. They're, you know, they have an owl. They have a TV station that's really good. We have a, we have our own TV channel that plays cocktail music 23 hours a day. And so I'm just, it's an uncomfortable discussion, but at, at bottom, my concern is either out versus in. Almost all of these things that I can't see, but are in the presentation are about satisfying people that already engage with the city. And there's also the outreach piece. And so I'm not, I'm not sure where the council wants to go. Do we, do we want to reach the entirety of the city? Or do we want to create a better customer satisfaction experience with the, take that Facebook community page, which has, I guess, 8,000 people. I don't know how many of them actually live in Des Moines, but it's an English-language thing. It's mostly the same couple hundred people, you know, regardless. And so I, I would question, is that really hitting the people that we want, you know, as wonderful as it is? Is that really expanding outreach? And whether we pick two or three, staff currently, you know, they have to repost stuff over and over again because there's not one community page. There's two now because people. So like, the reason that I hop on the, the app thing is I don't want staff spending more time going to different outlets. I want to drag the entirety of the population to us. And that's the app thing. You find one use case, be it a dog license, a permit, a calendar to a parent, and you've got that app on their phone. And then you can reach them. And so when they go Marina meeting coming in three months, bam, they show up. And one, one last thing, you know, I, I fully agree with councilmember Stein, it's about, councilmembers, I thought when I got into this that, you know, you're supposed to extend the reach of the city. But it's just a fact that for a couple of years under the previous management, we were explicitly told not to do that. We were told just direct everything to staff and that we should simply confine our activities to the meetings over and over again. So that's really a, like, what does this council want to be in terms of engaging with the residents? And that's another discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mahoney.
Just follow-up a comment on that. I think one of our biggest issues and part of it is knowing what to communicate has always been a misunderstanding of what our roles and responsibilities are, and that's a catalyst to there. One of my recommendations that you mentioned is, and it came out of, when we were looking at the revenues from our cable, you know, taxation that we were getting for in the utility fees and stuff like that, was that and, and home phones were dramatically dropping. And the conversation was that Channel 21 is actually one of those things that Xfinity we contract out with. And it was essentially headed to go out the way, everything's moving to streaming services. So a recommendation on streaming services would be great as well. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, looking around the room, anything else?
All right, well, I would like to say for me, this was never really about staff, but about providing better tools for staff and to the public and for us to use in gathering and sharing information. So every, just as this exercise right now, you know, refining this report, everything I wanted was mentioned more than once and clearly in this report. In working collaboration and compromise, in, in refining it, both and then coming up with next steps, we, we may have to set aside some of the things we want or postpone some certain items. But there's enough information, if we didn't do, if they didn't refine anything, there is enough information here to keep us and the staff busy for quite a while without an FTE, right? And one thing I did notice is the, if you want to call it customer satisfaction, just with the weekly reports alone that the city manager put out. So, you know, if we can just do a little bit at a time as we can, both councilmembers and staff, to, to implement a few of these things, it really quells the dissatisfaction in the community for how hard, you know, we're working on behalf of our community to serve. And, and we really are trying. So, so yeah, there's, there's enough here to create productive short-term and long-term goals already. There's enough to create measurable actions and improvement that we can all agree on. And there's, there's enough to create a work plan that will keep our staff and budget busy, serving our public, right? So I, what I did hear, though, from almost every councilmember is it would be nice to see some more specific tools mentioned. They, I think everybody seemed to kind of like that. So I think that's all really that needs to be said. Everybody said a lot. Thank you, Consoar. You guys are doing a great job for us. Appreciate having you. Thank you to the staff. It's been a lot to work together and to provide really usable information. Thank you to the public for showing up at these things and for participating and talking to people at the farmer's market and going to, coming to these, the focus groups. Thank you, thank you. And, and, and really the council, I mean, we're, we're being stretched here. And we may be tasked with spending even a little bit more time of, of our free time. But that's what we're here for, to serve the public, right? It's, that's why we're passionate about this. So I'm looking forward to the final report and creating next steps. Thank you. So now it is time to move to our executive search. Oh, so thank you. Any, any closing remarks? You guys are still sitting there?
No, I just want to thank you for all, I mean, this engagement is great. This is exactly what we had hoped to get out of this session. And hearing from you and from members of the public about your thoughts on the, the assessment and ways to improve it. And I think, you know, the important thing is, is that you are engaged and, and that, I think it's been noted that, you know, you can't build all the sidewalks at once, but you can make, you can take important steps, if you excuse the pun, on that sidewalk to make improvement. It's a, it's a process. It's a continuum. And so there's nothing like getting some early wins and establishing momentum. And I would just encourage, encourage the council and staff and the community to think about it that way. That it's a, it's a long-term process that takes everyone's participation.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate having you. Okay, so next up, we have, I'll open it up here. Our RFP Executive Search Recruitment Firm update with our Assistant City Manager. And the purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to review the reference information received from the six vendors whom responded to the city's request for proposal for an executive search recruitment firm to conduct the recruitment for the city manager vacancy. So AJ, go take it away.
Good evening, council and members of the public. My name is AJ. I am the Assistant City Manager for the City of Des Moines and like Mayor Buckson, just did that nice presentation. Thank you. I'm here just to provide a brief update on where we're at in the request for proposal to hiring the executive search firm for the city manager vacancy. Next slide, please. So just to recap the RFP process, again, RFP stands for Request for Proposal. You know, government likes their acronyms. We released the RFP on Friday, January 19th. The due date back to us was Tuesday, February 20th. We received six proposals. We received them from GMP Consultants, Mary Ann Gov., MGT of America, Proffman, Raftalise Financial Consultants and Strategic Government Resources. Strategic Government Resources might be familiar to some because that is the recruitment firm that conducted the 2016 city manager recruitment. So when I received the proposals on the 20th, I reviewed them to make sure that they had all of the components. And then I released them over to council on the 27th. And they are now currently reviewing the RFPs with the plan for next Thursday that the council will be able to make a determination on who they would like to move forward with. Next slide, please. So I had mentioned in my initial presentation that the hiring of the city manager really is a phased process. So we are really, we are at phase two, marked by you are here. And so really the purpose of this slide is just to show, once we get into phase three, that's really the recruitment of the city manager. So once the council makes a determination on who they're going to select for the executive search firm, that's really when the recruitment's going to begin. So we're just right on the precipice of getting ready to start the recruitment for real. Next slide, please. So to talk a little bit about the process for evaluating the proposals, if you recall, in the city's RFP that we released, we described what the criteria we would be using to evaluate the proposals. What we had in the RFP was basically how responsive they were to our proposal, their ability and capacity to perform the recruitment, what their references, their responses, how they conduct these types of recruitments, the qualifications and experience of the agency and their consultants that they would assign to us if we were to move forward with them. The costs, their ability to meet the services we'd like them to perform. And then essentially, how soon can they get started and how long are they proposing that the recruitment would take from start to finish? So that was our evaluation criteria that we had listed in our RFP. We created an evaluation rating sheet tool for the council, which I'll show on the next slide, that essentially has seven criteria and subcategories that they're evaluating the RFPs from. There's a numerical scoring associated with that. And then at the end of that numerical scoring, it will give a weighted final, final score. And so just a little bit about the evaluation tool. And so just a little bit about the evaluation tool. RFPs can be a really effective way to identify vendors that can perform a service, but as I'm sure the council's finding out, it can be kind of challenging to figure out which one is going to meet your needs. And so the evaluation rating sheet tool was just really a mechanism to give the council a tool to objectively measure certain criterias for them to be able to figure out who would, who we would get the most bang for our buck, really. Next slide, please. So here is the criteria that the council's rating against on their forms. Adherence to the RFP instructions, what sort of preparation are they going to provide and assistance during the search, the actual recruitment search process, the timeline, again, the relevant knowledge, experience, and qualifications of the person and the firm, the references, and then the cost. And you'll note that the references is in red. That's my part that I'm working on for the council. And so each vendor was tasked with providing at least three references. And so part of my role has been doing the information collection for the council, and I'll be turning over those references to them tomorrow so they can use that to continue their evaluation. Next slide, please. So the process for that, what I'm doing when I'm reaching out to the references is that I contacted at least two references per vendor. I gave them an option for a phone interview or written response. I provided them ratings on 14 different areas. And you'll notice to the right of the slide where it says reference evaluation, it's the same, some of the same criteria and subcategories that the council's also rating the proposals against. Because again, I wanted to make sure that we were using the same baseline perspective when we're looking at these proposals. And then they would rate each of those categories, one through five, ask them to explain the basis for their rating, and then, of course, they could provide additional comments. Next slide, please. So those are all of the cities that we have contacted. And we, let's see, before, I think as of 5 o'clock, we had nine of 14 that had responded back. So we have a few people that have indicated that they will respond in the morning. Once we receive that information back, I will be passing that forward on to the council for them to review. Next slide, please. Next steps. So just mentioned tomorrow, they'll be provided, council will be provided the references, responses. And then next Thursday, I'll come back and I will do a staff presentation. So council will return their evaluation criteria sheets to me. I'll compile them, we'll come up with a cumulative total. That is just for reference for the council. They're free to choose whomever they would like to, just for a discussion point. So I will come in, give the results from the council's evaluation, turn it over to council, and then hopefully at the end of that meeting, council will be ready to select a vendor. And that's all.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, AJ, when would you like the evaluation sheets back?
Monday by end of business, please.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, AJ. Going back to SRP, so I guess there was, you know, a person who, the Nevada guy, and after he backed away, well, was SRP still part of the process? Or did they, was, in other words, is there, does this process end when they provide a successful candidate? Which is, does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yeah, I understand your question, but unfortunately, I wasn't involved in the recruitment. So what I could tell is that they were responsible for the Nevada person. And then when that did not work out, I'm not sure if they were also involved because I believe that the former city manager was part of that pool. Is that correct? I don't know once what happened, once the first or the preferred choice that no longer worked, how, yeah, how he came into the second place.
I'm just.
They were involved with the hire.
Okay, so after, after that, the whole, okay, good. And second of all, not to put too fine a point on it, but as you call references, are they generally forthcoming about their, their experience with the vendors?
Yes, they actually have been.
Is that surprising? I mean, you're giggling. I'm just like, is it?
It can be, yeah. But I feel like the references that we got, people have been pretty forthright about their perspective on the experience and the things that they liked and the things that they, you know, did not necessarily like or did not work as well for their recruitment. And even with some caveats of that might have been because of the hiring authority and maybe not necessarily the company. So I will say it's not calling and, you know, normally, like, if you apply for a job and you put your reference down, there's an expectation that if employer calls your reference that you listed, they're going to say really great things about you. I would say that it, through this process, that has not been the case. People have been giving a pretty balanced view.
That's good.
Any questions down here? Councilmember Grace Motzui.
Building on that comment, actually, did you contact any references that were not provided by the vendors?
I did. So if you recall, in some of the RFPs, there, I think maybe only one or two actually listed three. And then I think a few others just had a list of people that they've worked with. So in that case, I went through and did some rough math, looked at like similar position, similar size city, and tried to come up with what I thought would be, would yield us the best reference in terms of like an honest reference.
Great, thank you. Second, it looks like to me that one of these vendors was recently acquired by the other one of these vendors that are in our pile. So is there going to be a meaningful difference between choosing between them?
She might be talking about the Prothman.
No, 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 I'm actually talking about this one. Oh. The Moraine. So Gov. HR USA was recently acquired by MGT, which I believe is the same as the Moraine.
No, it's not.
Really? They have the same logo.
I, so it's my understanding that they're separate companies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is, there are two companies that were, they were formerly one company, and then there was a divorce, and so they formed the new company. But as I understand it, these are six separate entities.
Okay, because these are.
If you want to provide that information specifically, we can look into it.
Sure.
Just to make sure.
Thank you.
Good eye. Any other questions there? Do some of the cities, the reference cities that you, have some of these cities that we're calling, have they had experience with more than one of our vendors?
I only asked about the vendor that had them listed as, you know, that they were listed on the RFP. So I didn't ask if they had worked with any of the other five.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Harris.
I just noticed that I'm, that some of the vendors list the same city. And I, you know, there's, over a period of time, you could switch, I guess you could switch vendors, but it was just interesting to me, like, in other words, a lot of these cities, it seems like they've established a longstanding relationship. And so if they have switched, that would say something to me. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. This is, it's a lot.
Some of the crossover might have came from one of the vendors becoming two. So there was shared clientele, and they probably potentially, because I think I saw the same thing that you did. I'm guessing they both referenced when they were one company and had worked with the cities.
But I would say you're right. If they have an established relationship, if you have a director for Bullock Works open, you might say, oh, I had a really good experience with them, I'll go back for another recruitment. So that's not unusual.
Okay. Well, AJ, good job.
Thank you.
Onward and upward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it looks like we're coming to the conclusion of our meeting tonight. Our next meeting date will be March 14th, 2024. Please remember, if you could, to pick up after yourself on your way out. And Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, would you like to? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it looks like it's unanimous.